Good evening. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, November 25th, and the time is 6:30 PM. If I could ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if you are able. Mrs. Lavelle, if we could have a roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti.
Here.
Mrs. Reynis.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Regan. Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mrs. Rosaci.
Here.
Mr. Votto.
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite now our student board representatives, always one of the highlights for our meetings. We'll start with Lyman Hall, Maggie Corso. Welcome. Thanks so much for being here with us today.
Hello, I am Maggie Corso. I'm going to start off with, we started off our month on November 4th with the Powderpuff Faculty Game where the seniors were victorious. On November 6th, we did the Senior Aerial Photo during advisory. Community Day took place on November 11th. We had 11 houses that we were able to rake for, for senior citizens. On November 20th, Mr. Corso and Mr. Baker picked up 20 turkeys and the sides to go with them from Etna to support Lyman Hall families for Thanksgiving. On November 21st, there was the ASTE, also known as the Agricultural Science Open House, where students toured, possible incoming students around the Ag program. November 22nd was our Homecoming Dance, which had extreme success, was selling almost 500 tickets. November 23rd was the Lyman Hall's Band Craft Fair. On November 27th, we will host the Samaha Bowl. And November 28th, the Thanksgiving Day Football Game will take place against Shein. On November 10th, the Powderpuff Girls attended the Veterans Breakfast at the Elks Lodge. They sat down with veterans and served them breakfast and had a great time. We would like to congratulate all the Lyman Hall students being honored tonight. The band placed second at Nationals and the color guard was ranked the best. Powderpuff is right around the corner. The school is filled with posters and spirit. Upcoming events. Parent Conferences are on December 4th. From December 2nd through the 20th, our Plant Science Program will be hosting its annual Holiday Shop where they sell wreaths and other Christmas-related items. December 9th is our 8th grade Family Night. This is an open house for incoming 9th graders. And December 18th is the Holiday Concert. Thank you.
Maggie? Maggie? How many, how many families did you guys help raking leaves? That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maggie, for being here with us. And now from Shein, we have Nick Kent and Cole McDonald. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Okay, so during the past month, the, one of the first things that happened was our NHS was inducted and we have a lot of cool activities coming up. So we have a trivia night with the middle schools starting to get planned, SAT prep courses for the upcoming SATs, a new Teacher of the Month program that's voted by the students, and a Cook Hill Mentor Program that we hope to start in January. We also had our leaf raking program done. We were able to, we were able to leaf rake 17 houses and it was very successful. Our Homecoming Dance was on the 23rd, even though there was a fire alarm during it, we all had a great time. And also, our Spirit Week is currently going on with Powderpuff and the Karini Bowl coming up. Right now, in first place for our Spirit Point for the seniors, followed by the sophomores, the juniors, and then the freshmen.
We do have some upcoming events in the near future. On Wednesday, as Maggie Corso said, we will have the annual Powderpuff Game, followed by the Karini Bowl on Thursday. On the 29th, there obviously will be no school because of Black Friday, or sorry, Thanksgiving break. Next week, next Thursday, December 5th, all of our winter sports will be starting. Our boys and girls basketball will be starting preseason. Swimming, indoor track, hockey, and wrestling will all begin regular practices. On December 9th, we will finish our first half of our second semester, or our second quarter. On December 18th, students will have their second opportunity to save lives and donate blood for the American Red Cross, where in September, 71 lives were saved through blood donations. And on December 19th, we hope to see you all at Shein for the Mark T. Shein Band Winter Concert.
Thank you so much to the both of you for coming and sharing. It's amazing to hear about all the community service. I love hearing about the inter-school relationships that are being built. It's really amazing. And I know where everyone is super excited for Powderpuff and the Thanksgiving Day Game, so a lot of excitement there. And I echo those Black Friday sentiments, so I hear you. Now probably one of the best parts of our meeting this evening, and I can speak for the board when I say that, is getting to the presentation and the awards. So Superintendent Belizzi, I'll pass this right over to you.
Good evening, everyone. This is a very good part of the evening as well. So we're going to start off tonight honoring our U.S. Presidential Scholars. So we celebrate the exceptional achievements of our U.S. Presidential Scholar students. They're an extraordinary group of young leaders whose dedication and hard work and talent have earned them one of the nation's highest honors for our high school students. So being named a U.S. Presidential Scholar is a testament to these students' academic excellence and commitment to leadership, their creativity, and their service to others. So your accomplishment inspires your peers, your families, the community, and reminds of us, reminds us of the limited potential for every one of you. So to the families, teachers, and mentors who helped all of our students get to where they are, we appreciate all of your hard work helping them along the way because you've contributed to their success as well. So congratulations to these outstanding scholars. Your journey is just beginning and the future is very bright for all of you. So to get started, I'm going to ask Mr. Corso, who is the principal of Lyman Hall High School, to come on up and recognize students from his school.
Thank you. And at this time, thank you, Mrs. Belizzi, and the Board of Education for having us here. I'm going to call up Marcus Burson. Marcus, can you come on up here? All right. So standing to my left is Marcus Burson. He's Lyman Hall's honoree this year for the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program. Marcus is an exemplary student, an individual whose academic achievements and personal dedication set him apart as a role model in our school community. Since moving to Connecticut from Illinois in his junior year, Marcus has adapted seamlessly to a new environment, maintaining his straight A academic record while excelling in both honors and dual enrollment classes. His ability to thrive academically in a rigorous curriculum demonstrates his intellectual capability and strong work ethic. Outside of the classroom, Marcus's leadership qualities shine. As a captain of the Powderpuff Cheerleaders, he fosters teamwork and school spirit, contributing positively to the school's culture. In addition, Marcus's role on the morning announcements for yearbook class and his advanced business management class illustrates his communication skills and initiative. By keeping the school informed about current events, Marcus showcases both his leadership and his dedication to the broader student body. What is most remarkable about Marcus is his personal commitment to his family. As one of four children raised by a single mother, he takes a significant responsibility caring for his two younger siblings. This level of dedication to his family while managing the demands of school and extracurricular activities speaks volumes about his character, maturity, and resilience. Marcus is an extraordinary young man with an impressive blend of academic prowess, leadership, and strong moral compass. I have no doubt that he'll continue to excel and contribute meaningfully to any community and institution he joins. What's most interesting about Marcus is he came here his junior year, and you would have thought he was a part of Lyman Hall High School from his freshman year on. His personality and the hallway just brightens it up whenever he walks by. You heard everyone's cheer when he came up, and that's generally, he makes me feel like a better person every day. He tells me I look good, I look sharp. No one else tells me that. So every day without fail, he's acknowledging something great about someone else and just lifting up the spirits of everyone at Lyman Hall. And, you know, that's something that can't be taught. So he's an amazing student at Lyman Hall. He will be sorely missed when he leaves us, and I would say is pretty irreplaceable. Marcus, congratulations. At this time, Mr. Zacco.
Okay, I have the pleasure to announce the female recipient of the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program for the general component. Danica Tangretti, come on up. So Danica is the Shein U.S. Presidential Scholar Program recipient. She is dynamic, intelligent, conscientious student who has made the most of her high school experience. Her motivation and persistence in achieving goals that she sets for herself are very impressive. Academically, Danica is taking a very challenging course load this senior year, with all AP Level courses ranked third in her competitive class. She is never one to back down from a challenge. As the National Honor Society's member, Danica has served on several NHS committees and has served also as the secretary of the Class of 2025 for the past four years. She is always giving back to others and helping her fellow classmates. Danica has academically earned recognition with two outstanding academic achievement awards and earned the Seal of Bileiteracy in Spanish last year. Her positivity and easy way in which she relates to others, in addition to her love for academics, music, and her community, make it clear that she deserves to be honored with this award. Outside of the classroom, she is a whirlwind of activities as well that she participates in. Her leadership is well documented through her activities, including her being the president of our SAD chapter at Shein High School, Students Against Destructive Decisions, helping to efficiently run our dramatic and musical performances behind the scenes as a stage manager, earning first violin in the Cheshire Symphony Orchestra, and her participation in community service. If there is a need for a volunteer, you can count on Danica to be in the thick of it. Never seeking accolades, but doing it because it's the right thing to do. Her strength of character, leadership, and service, and strong academic performance make her an excellent choice as Wallingford's nominee for the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program. Congratulations, Danica. All right. I have one more U.S. Presidential Award to give, and we're going to have Galena Esposito come on up. Give me a second. Here we go. Whew. All right. Galena has also won the U.S. Presidential Nomination, and this is for the career in technical, it's in the field of career and technical education. So Galena Esposito is Wallingford's nominee for the CTE component of the U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program. Galena's academic achievements, leadership skills, and dedication to both extracurricular activities and to her community are impressive. She is a strong student and individual who will contribute positively to her future college campus. She consistently makes the Shein honor roll, which speaks to her academic work ethic. She challenges herself and is willing to raise the bar in order to reach her full potential. Furthermore, Galena balances her academic responsibilities with a variety of extracurricular pursuits. As the president of our school's DECA chapter, which is our business organization, Galena has taken on numerous leadership responsibilities, guiding her peers through competitions and fostering a collaborative team environment. Last year, she was invited to participate in the DECA Nationals in California, where she had the opportunity to network with other students from across the country, participate in leadership activities, and present a comprehensive project to judges on the topic of school store enterprise. To quote her business teacher, "Galena's presentation, presentation skills, professionalism, and ability to work under pressure during this event were particularly impressive and highlighted her potential for future business success." It is also noteworthy that Galena takes on, takes what she has learned in her business courses and through her involvement in DECA and puts these concepts into practice at Powder Ridge, where she is currently employed, working with customers. Galena has further shown her dedication to organizations such as Students Against Destructive Decisions and as a member of Shein's lacrosse team, demonstrating perseverance and teamwork skills. She is also involved with Wallingford's Youth Leadership Group and assists with the Wallingford Youth Lacrosse Program by mentoring younger players. Her role as a gym intern assisting a teacher, Mr. Terrell, it's Mr. Terrell, right? All right, Mr. Farazzi, sorry. Further demonstrates her willingness to contribute to her community and give back to others. Galena is a planner. She likes to be prepared and thinks things through. She has learned that being aware of expectations, organizing, and preparing in advance help her to maintain composure even in stressful situations. Simply put, she is proactive. Her ability to balance demands while maintaining a positive attitude make her an outstanding candidate for this honor. Congratulations, Galena.
Okay. Next up, we have our National School Development Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning. So we're proud to recognize these outstanding achievements of the students who have been honored with the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning. This prestigious award celebrates individuals who exemplify the essence of educational excellence, demonstrating significant academic growth while embracing leadership roles that inspire their peers and elevate their learning. Your dedication to the personal success and your ability to uplift those around you reflect in the best of these candidates. So today, to the educators and families again, and mentors who helped them be successful, we say thank you for your part in this and for your role, and we say congratulations to our recipients for this. So, Mr. Corso from Lyman Hall, will you come on up and introduce your students?
All right, Charlie, if we can start with you. It is with immense pride and admiration, oh yes, stay right there, you don't get to go down yet, that I stand before you to recognize Charlie Elliott, a truly remarkable member of our graduating class of 2025, as one of the recipients of this year's NSDC Award. Charlie's accomplishments speaks volumes to her as a student at Lyman Hall. She's maintained an impressive 4.04 GPA, placing her 23rd in her class of 216 students. She has excelled in a rigorous academic program, including seven Advanced Placement Courses and five ECE Courses, as well as earning recognition as an AP Scholar. She's also a proud recipient of the Seal of Bileiteracy and has been an active member of the National Honor Society, where she serves as vice president. However, what makes Charlie truly exceptional is not just her academic success, but the character and determination she demonstrates in all aspects of her life. Despite facing challenges that would test even the strongest among us, Charlie has risen above with grace, resilience, and an unwavering commitment to helping others. Her dedication to her school community is inspiring. She's volunteered over 215 hours, offering her time and talents to make a difference in the lives of others. As a Trojan tutor, Charlie has gone above and beyond to provide academic and social-emotional support to underclassmen, demonstrating her dedication to helping others succeed. She selfishly gave up her study hall for an entire year to serve as a chemistry teacher assistant, working directly in the classroom to support students and enhance their learning experience. Described by her teachers as compassionate and driven with exceptional leadership skills, Charlie is widely regarded as one of the most remarkable and impactful students they've had the privilege of teaching. In addition to her academic and volunteer efforts, Charlie is a leader in every sense of the word. She has captained the field hockey team, inspiring her teammates with her work ethic and positivity, and has balanced multiple jobs, demonstrating responsibility and perseverance well beyond her years. Charlie's remarkable journey is a testament to her strength, determination, and heart. She has faced significant obstacles and emerged stronger, more compassionate, and with a clear sense of purpose. Her desire to make a difference in the world is evident in everything she does, and she has undoubtedly left a lasting impact on our school community. It is students like Charlie who remind us of the power of resilience, kindness, and hard work. We are incredibly proud of her accomplishments and know she will continue to make meaningful difference in every community she is a part of. Please join me in congratulating Charlie and her family for this well-deserved honor. Meredith, you are next. The Lyman Hall High School community has the pleasure of presenting our second award recipient tonight for the NSDC Award to Meredith Loughlin. As a recipient, oh, I just said that, we'll skip that part. Meredith is currently completing her senior year at Lyman Hall High School. She has consistently demonstrated excellent and exceptional academic integrity while exemplifying admirable character in all her endeavors. Meredith is the type of individual who seamlessly makes all of her, all of the folks around her feel welcome and at ease. She demonstrates a warm kindness that is contagious and unassuming, and an unassuming confidence that sets her apart from the rest. Meredith is a highly accomplished student who is extremely dedicated to her academics. As an exclusively AP and honor student, ranked in the top 7% of her class, Meredith exemplifies an outstanding work ethic and commitment to high achievement. She has earned the Seal of Bileiteracy in Spanish and is currently excelling in AP Spanish VI while balancing additional rigorous courses such as AP Calc, AP Psych, and AP Psych. Meredith's academic interests extend into the STEM area, and she has been recognized for her work in architectural drafting and design, earning an Excellence Award for her work in that course. A well-rounded leader, she was inducted into the National Honor Society, recognizing her outstanding character and commitment and community involvement, as well as her academic prowess. Meredith is a positive role model for all of her peers, as demonstrated through her leadership, sportsmanship, and dedication to community service. As a two-year captain of the Lyman Hall Swimming and Dive Team and a recipient of the Trojan Award for Outstanding Sportsmanship, she has exemplified teamwork, resilience, and encouragement. Her athletic involvement extends to being a valued four-year member of the varsity tennis team as well. Meredith's leadership, leadership skills shine through her roles as a student council treasurer for two consecutive years and class council secretary during her senior year. Additionally, as Lyman Hall, as a Lyman Hall High School ambassador, she has served as a guide and a mentor for underclassmen and new students, fostering a welcoming and supportive school environment and being a friendly face for our new students when they arrive. Beyond school, Meredith has made meaningful impact through her volunteerism and contributions with her time to a local homeless, the local homeless shelter, the public library, and an organization dedicated to spreading heart health awareness. Her extracurricular choices consistently reflect her selflessness and dedication to making a positive difference. Meredith is the rare type of student that educators are lucky enough to work with only a few times in their career. Her kindness, altruism, and easygoing nature have added to the positive culture of our Lyman Hall High School community and help her stand out as an outstanding human being. Please join me in congratulating Meredith and her family. Mr. Zacco.
All right. I also have two NSDC Awards to give to our students. We'll start with Arnold Dominguez. Arnold, come on down. Okay. Arnold Dominguez is a worthy recipient of the National School Development Council's Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning. He has enrolled in challenging courses throughout his time at Shein and consistently demonstrates a willingness to challenge himself in preparation for college. Arnold's determination and work ethic in the classroom, on the soccer field, and through community service are impressive. He's a leader on the field and has served as a peer tutor, providing support in algebra for his fellow students. In addition, he has a creative side, which he demonstrates as a member of the Art Club and through the various art courses he has enrolled in here at Shein High School. Arnold has also served as a member of Shein's Blood Drive Committee, helping to coordinate the successful blood drives that have continued, that we've continued to hold at Shein to benefit the Red Cross and its important effort to supply blood to patients in need. Arnold has also contributed to the school's food drives and his church's food drives as well, volunteering his time to the collection of canned goods for those in need. He has also volunteered his time at the Spanish community of Wallingford. Most notably, Arnold is a kind, respectful person whose peers look up to him and recognize him as a role model. A member of the senior class recently stated that spending time with Arnold makes him a better person. Arnold's quiet confidence, his genuine good nature, and his value of academic success are qualities that make him deserving of this award. Congratulations, Arnold. Okay, Isabella, come on up. Isabella Carbuti, she is our second recipient. So Bella Carbuti is a worthy recipient of the National School Development Council's Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning. Bella has achieved a remarkable 4.1 GPA, excelling in challenging courses, honors and AP courses that demonstrate her deep commitment to academic excellence. She has consistently earned her place on the high honor roll, reflecting her hard work and dedication to her education. Beyond her academic achievements, Bella is a true leader in our school community. In her AP classes, she stands out as someone her peers look up to. She also contributes her leadership skills to the National Honor Society, where she serves on the Leadership Committee, guiding young students in public speaking and helping middle schoolers set meaningful goals. Bella's talents extend to the arts, where she shines as a member of the Triumph Honor Society, the Shein Dramatic Arts Society, and Varsity Choir. She has shared her passion onstage in productions like High School Musical, La Misérable, and Newsies, and she further enriches our school community through her involvement at Wendy's School of Dance and the Music Center in North Haven. From volunteering at community events to supporting local seniors and veterans, Bella exemplifies generosity and compassion. Her commitment to our school also includes being active in the French Club, Prom Committee, and serving as our football manager. Her enthusiasm, leadership, and dedication inspire everyone around her. Congratulations, Bella.
Congratulations to all of our recipients and thank you to Mr. Corso and Mr. Zacco for that. The next thing we have up is to honor our Lyman Hall High School School Band and Color Guard. We want to congratulate them on their outstanding performance, placing second at the National Championships, which is a remarkable achievement, and we couldn't be prouder of all of their hard work, dedication, and talent. So the group earned a score of 93.2, which is the highest score this group has ever achieved. And then a special congratulations to our color guard, who earned the title of Best Color Guard with a score of 98.5. So these accomplishments are a testament to the countless hours of practice, teamwork, and determination. Their excellence, both on and off the field, has made Lyman Hall and the community very proud. A special thank you to Mrs. Katie Robinson, who has led this beautiful team. So please join me in congratulating them, the band, and also the color guard on a great season, and I'll ask Mrs. Robinson to come on up at this time.
I just wanted to say a few words before I introduce our band. We are 49 strong. Our season actually began on August 21st. Our season actually began on August 12th, so they have put hundreds of hours into this activity for a seven-and-a-half-minute show that ended up being obviously an award-winning performance, but what I'm most proud of with this group is just their spirit and their kindness towards each other and towards every group that we've competed against. It's never been, oh, like, we beat you or anything like that. Nobody sits on the bench, I tell them that all the time, and I'm just so very proud of them. So I would real quick like to give a shout out to all the parents as well, so anybody that's out there in the audience, if you could stand to be recognized, the parents before I call up the kids. Thank you. Our props this year were mountains, so they literally moved mountains. Okay, I would like to call up our band, so just please come up to the front when I call your name. Maya Alvarado, Hazeus Avila, Hayden Bow, Sam Beckett, Connor Bedan, Octavia Boucher, Laney Brewster, Lucas Caban, Evan Cabello, Crystal Chung, Sal Cosgrove, Brianna Kazi, Isabella D'Antonio, Yanni Dasmis Non, Madeline Dominguez, Javier Dominguez, Michael Farrell, Brylee Frank, Kevin Frost, Maddox Gizi, Maritza Hernandez Rodriguez, Erin Herpock, Cody Hi, Gabby Jackson, Ava Young, Yara Keshavars, Daniel Legacy, Matthew Legacy, Alex Lanzoni, Derek Lanzoni, Sam Lopez, Jacob Marone, Ryan Maxwell, Colleen McBride, Jessica Merchant, Peyton Mosher, Charlotte Nemeth, Sophie Nemeth, Swani Obah, Logan Prismott, Soli Ramirez, Zach Reininger, Fiorella Rodriguez, Justin Salzo, Van Silaway, Paula Silva Crespo, Isla Sim, Hannah Sweeney, Samuel Walton, and Richard Young.
One row up top, one on the stair, and one below. But look this way. There you go. We're gonna count. So close, okay. Everyone take a deep breath, squeeze in. Perfect, I got you all. And that is impressive. All right.
I mean, that is really impressive, Ms. Robison, all of those hours for seven-and-a-half minutes. Talk about a high-pressure situation where you have to deliver, right? The best seven-and-a-half minutes. So congratulations again, congratulations to all of our students who are being awarded. It really gives us something to be very proud of here in Wallingford, and these are the things that we love to be able to celebrate, it's student achievement. And I know our meetings are super riveting, but by all means, you're welcome to stay or leave, whatever fits your schedule. So if you want to go ahead, you may go, no problem. Thank you again for being with us.
The thing looks a lot longer than it is. Congratulations. All right, we'll see you tomorrow. Yeah, take care.
So the next item on our agenda is public comment. I do not see anyone in the audience, but I just want to ask, is anyone here for a public comment? Going once, going twice, okay. We do not have public comment this evening. Moving to item number seven is our consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.19. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any objections, any abstentions? That motion carries. We do not have any items that were removed from the consent agenda, so I will give it right over to you, Mrs. Passretti, for our correspondence.
Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. Is this on? Yes, it is. I have two items here that I'd like to share. It's not picking up. It's on. Can people hear me? Hello, hello? Okay, I have two items here, and of course, I can only find one at the moment. But I'll go with the one that I have in my hand. Okay, the first one here, I'd like to, at this time, acknowledge a donation from East Center Market. East Center Market donated to DAG 10 frozen turkeys for families in need, and the value of which was $500. We'd like to thank East Center Market for that generous donation. I know that those, at this time especially, there is a great need for these type of gifts, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. And then we have a second one. There it is. The second gift that I would like to acknowledge at this time is donated to Sheehan High School Athletics for the Sheehan Turf, and the donation is an AED and case to be placed at the Sheehan Turf. And this donation was given from, the name of the foundation is called In a Heartbeat Foundation, care of Michael Papale here in Wallingford, and the value of this is $2,300. Very significant, and a very, very much-needed piece of equipment for the athletic department. We greatly appreciate that donation. We thank you very much, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move now to our committee reports. Mr. Ross, do you have a report for ACES? No report, okay, perfect, thank you. Mrs. Latour, our update for Systemwide PTAC, please.
Great. Good evening, everyone. We had the first full meeting of the year on October 30th. It was an opportunity for the entire group to review norms, to discuss the purpose behind Systemwide PTAC, and to elect this year the new president and vice president, as Brian Revard stepped down at the end of last year. So Valerie Glynn was elected to be president, Melissa Beamer was elected vice president. The group had a discussion regarding the building PTACs and to begin to brainstorm some ideas and thoughts for the goals for Systemwide PTAC for the school year. Parent Choice Awards were moved to after the first of the year. The meeting schedule and calendar was shared with the group, and then there was some discussion regarding community events, and that evening, there was also some discussion about answering some questions about the middle school wind block. So it was a successful meeting, it was a highly-attended meeting, which was very nice to see for the first one out of the gate for the year. The next meeting will be on December 17th, that is a committee meeting, it's not a full meeting, and then the next full meeting will be in January.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Latour. Mrs. Turner, the Special Education PTAC update, please.
Good evening. We did not have a November meeting. Our next meeting is December 10th at 6:30. That meeting will be held in a hybrid manner, both virtually and in person at the Wallingford Board of Education meeting, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. It will be, once again, translated, so if families that need translation would like to attend, they need to let our office know, we will have translation available. At our last meeting, the parents had requested a nuts and bolts of the IEP, so we'll be walking through the IEP page by page, kind of going through what should parents be looking for, how can they advocate for their child, as well as how to access the new IEP system and how to best read that IEP.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Turner. Mr. Bondi, do you have a food service?
No, no November meeting, our next meeting is December 12th.
Yes, so no November meeting, but the next meeting is December 12th. Thank you very much for that. Dr. Thompson, diversity, equity, and inclusion update, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. No information to report for November, however, on December 16th, I'll be heading to Hartford to meet with the State Diversity Roundtable, which includes districts from across the state to talk about activities and best practices that are occurring, so I'm looking forward to bringing that back and sharing it with all of you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. And Mr. Dearing, the CAPE report, please.
Things have been pretty busy at CAPE the past couple of weeks. The annual convention took place earlier this month, November 15th and 16th, so I attended for those two days. I was joined by a couple members of our central office team, as well as by two of our student board representatives. It was really good to see them at the convention. All of the materials from the convention will be posted to the CAPE website shortly, if they haven't been posted already. And then one week from tomorrow is the CAPE Conference that will be taking place in Rocky Hill. CAPE is also continuing their webinar series, where they have several webinars each month that are all posted on the website.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dearing. And that concludes our committee reports. Moving to item number 11, that's old business, which we do not have any this evening. And item number 12 is executive session, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive, excuse me, executive session for the purpose of discussing items 12.1 through 12.4. Is there any discussion on this motion? Oh, you know what? Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion carries, we are now in executive session. Welcome back, we are out of executive session now. Looking at our agenda, item number 13 is the Instructional Committee, which we actually don't need a report from them right now. Moving right along to the Operations Committee, Mrs. Reynis, I will pass it over to you.
Hello, thank you. So the Operations Committee did meet on this month, on November 12th, and we had a very robust and productive meeting. Some of our highlights included Mr. Barone giving us an update as to our surplus budget, which is a typical trend this time of year due to vacancies. There was a slight concern about our special education costs as those are rising. Then we moved on to speaking about moving what was left in our 2% fund to go towards renting the Lyman Hall boilers, and that would have to be presented to Town Council this year. There is a little bit of extra money left over from some of the projects that we have finished, and we also spoke about moving that around to cover the boiler rentals as well. Then the Town Council also asked for an open dialogue regarding our 10-year waterfall plan with the Board of Education to ensure that we would work together in the future, and this would appear on a future Town Council agenda. Then Mr. Bondi gave our financial food services update, and notably, the improvement log had no complaints from parents or students, which was a great month. Then we moved on to Mr. Deptula, who gave some great updates on projects that were completed. We did have a couple of board member concerns regarding tennis court paintings and the Lyman Hall softball field status. We also discussed the civil engineering funding for a study about the wet track and field at Sheehan, and that pretty much wrapped up our meeting.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Reynis. Now Superintendent Blizzi, if you could give us your administrative report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry. Just a couple of reminders as we go forward. I think the student representatives talked about it, but I just wanted to remind everyone about the Samah Bowl that is on Wednesday at 2:30. This will be at Lyman Hall this year, so we are looking forward to that. And then the Thanksgiving Day Game, which is Thursday, November 28th, that starts at 10:00 a.m. So board members and all are welcome to attend if you are available to either game or both games. I also wanted to just share that last week was American Education Week, and so we were excited to celebrate and invite our families in, to come to the classrooms, and community members to come in and see all of the hard work that's happening in all of our schools and our classrooms. I know the students were excited to have families in to see what they've been working on, and I know that families were happy to be able to come in and spend some time in their children's classrooms. So again, we thank everyone for taking that time to be able to do it. I think it's really powerful for everyone to be able to see the extraordinary things that our students are doing and our staff is doing with our students. So very excited to share that. I also wanted to talk about the new Wallingford One High School Project. And so as you all know, we are continuing our work on the One High School Project with our consultants from Colliers &amp; Slam. We are finishing up our educational specifications that we've been working on for the past few months. These ed specs as a draft will be presented with our consultants with us at the next board meeting here on December 16th. It will be an opportunity for them to share what we've worked on with them, for them to share a draft with all of you and with the public. There will be opportunity for a question and answer then from all of you. The ed specs draft will be shared with all, and there will be subsequent meetings where they can answer any additional questions that come in from all of you, from the public, until those ed specs are potentially proposed for approval by all of you, looking at a timeline of approximately February's board meeting. And so they will be available for subsequent meetings after that to review and discuss with us and all of you what we've done thus far on them. And keeping in mind that even if they are approved back in February going forward, they are still subject to change as things come in and we continue to work on them. The ed specs really just are rationale for our goals for The ed specs really just are rationale for our goals, for what we're programming for, for the long-term visions for the school. It just looks at the space that's required for classroom space, for office spaces, for conference room spaces, to look at the labs, the configuration of them, and it really is something that informs the project down the line. So if this project is something that goes forward and is funded, it is a piece of the puzzle that is shared with designers and architects that come into play later on if this project goes forward. So I just wanted to provide everyone with kind of some context for what these are and what you'll see in December here, in this, here at Town Hall at our next meeting. So I think that's all I have thus far. I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour to share some updates.
Good evening, everyone. November was a busy and very fast month in the world of curriculum. We started off the month with our Election Day PD for staff and ran 40-plus different sessions, depending on your level and your content, and all was well-received. This month, we also, as I spoke about last month, had students go out to the Carpenter's Union and the Electrical Union. As was asked last month, yes, the armed services do come into the high schools. The Marines have already been to one of our high schools, and so these dates continue to be scheduled throughout the school year, as well as college visits to both high schools. Mr. Ullman is also working with the Operators Union, which is large machinery, which was a new learning for me this morning, as well as the Masons Union as well, so he's really trying to branch out and offer many different opportunities. So for our families who may be watching, there is a Google Classroom that he runs with the dates for students to sign up. Some of the more popular experiences, he'll run a spring visit as well to ensure that everyone has the opportunity, because the group sizes are small. About 10 to 12 students at a time will go out to the union headquarters to hear a little lecture, see a demonstration, participate as well, and it's been a really great opportunity for both of our high schools to send students to. So I will keep the board informed of that as they happen. The last thing I wanted to mention, I did send out to the board, but to our parents as well, the Accountability Index came out for all schools in Connecticut for the school year 2324. All of the results are public on EdSite, so for anyone who wants to delve into the world of data for all of the districts in the state of Connecticut, it really is a fascinating place to go, not that I haven't spent hours in there. And I cannot stress the amount of pride we have as a school system. We have seen an incredible amount of growth in our overall index for the last school year, over 5%. It's been our highest rate of growth since pre-COVID, so it's really nice to see the results of the hard work of our staff and our building administrators. The accountability results focus on a broad set of indicators. It's not a singular piece of data, one standardized test report. It's 12 different indicators that view achievement on standardized tests, growth on standardized tests, graduation rates, chronic absenteeism, physical fitness results, art access. So it really looks at career readiness, academics, to look at the district's ability to provide students a well-rounded education. When we look at our schools and how they performed, 11 out of our 12 schools increased, our increases ranged in overall Accountability Index from 0.4% upwards of 37.2%, which is really amazing when you look at the different indicators that are reviewed at each level. I do want to make a point to note that Wallingford had two schools of distinction, which we're very proud of. Mary G. Fritz and Pond Hill Elementary were noted by the Connecticut State Department of Education as a school of distinction for their high growth in English language arts within their high-needs population. If you recall from our fall presentation, high-needs students, which were about 50/50 in this district right now, school by school, or any student who has a socioeconomic free and reduced lunch label, special education, or ML status, and those two schools had such high growth within that population that they were noted by the State of Connecticut's Department of Ed. So huge congratulations to the staffs at Mary G. Fritz and Pond Hill. If the board has any questions regarding the results, as you see them on EdSite, please feel free to reach out, but it really is a pleasure to see the schools, all of them, and how they've grown within each indicator and then their overall index for the previous school year. And that's all I have.
Quick question. I was glad to hear that they are, the kids are being going to the Electrical Union and Carpenter's Union. I know in your update it did mention Electrical, but I was going to bring it up to you about the Carpenter one.
Yes.
Now, do they just, they just go there and listen to somebody talk to tell them about the job?
That's part of it. So they go, they are introduced to the job itself, what it entails, the necessary certifications, et cetera. They generally have a work experience where portions of the job, depending on which union they're at, are modeled, and then the kids have some hands-on opportunities to participate as well.
I know the Carpenter's Union actually holds classes, they have classrooms. I don't know if it's postgraduate, if it's within, you know, while they're still in school, they offer some time for that, or I would, maybe I should just call them and find out. I don't know, I just, I think it's great that we're pushing kids in this direction, because so many of them are interested, but unfortunately, sometimes they push to maybe go to college, and, you know, this is something that they might be interested in, and it's a good opportunity, so I'm glad we're doing that.
Yeah, but visits have been very well-received. Mr. Ullman is keeping track, obviously, of, he has a waitlist for students for some of the unions that, you know, he has a limited number of students that go, so that he can schedule an additional visit in the spring, so that everyone has the opportunity to visit and then ask their questions and make decisions about their life after high school planning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just real quick, Tuesday, December, nope, Thursday, December 5th, from 6 to 7, we are going to have a preschool information evening. Liz Gaffney, our preschool coordinator, is going to have a virtual meeting, and translator will be available. They're going to go over the preschool lottery process, they're going to discuss the curriculum, as well as the mission and the philosophy behind our preschool, and answer any questions. So all parents that are interested in preschool next year are encouraged to attend.
Thank you so much for those updates, and congratulations again to Pond Hill School and Mary G. Fritz on those distinctions. It's really something that makes Wallingford stand out, something that we're very proud of. And to just echo the sentiments that you had talked about, Superintendent Blizzi, American Education Week was awesome. As I put my parent hat on, being able to be in the classroom, see the students learning, their excitement, I happened to be there during a time when indoor recess was available, and I was in awe of the amount of students who chose to, in third grade, do the Greg Tang fluency math challenge, which they're really fighting for that pizza party. So it was just really exciting to see the students excited about learning. So thank you so much to the staff and the teachers, the administrators who coordinate that for parents. It really is a special time. So thank you so much for all of those reports, and looking forward to our next meetings. Monday, December 2nd, we have an instructional committee meeting at 6 p.m., and that's via Google Meet. And also on Monday, December 9th, there's the operations committee meeting via Google Meet at 6 p.m. And then our next meeting here in the Town Hall chambers will be Monday, December 16th, and that time is at 6:30. And just a reminder, that is where we will be discussing some of those draft education specs, so if that's something that interests you, that would be a great meeting to come and visit us. And with nothing else to come before this board, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.